Good evening, this is the Finance District Committee meeting for November 5th. The time is 6:03 at which I am, which time I'm calling it to order. How do you like all that? I hope the rest of the meeting goes better than my, my brain addiction at this point. So, the first item of business is the review of the October 7th, 2025 meeting minutes of this committee. Anybody have any questions? Amendments, modifications. Ernie, non-alternatative motion to accept the October 7th minutes.
Motion to approve.
That's it? Bye. So, okay, so I'll move.
Oh, sorry.
Jay's in. Jay's online.
Oh, Jay's online? Okay. Yeah, I heard Jay seconded. So, for the record. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. You unanimously. So, the next big item is Director of Finance report. Well, I don't know what we want to go into. I, Ernie, are you just here for the meal balances? Are you here for something in the review?
That's all I'm here for, Dean.
Okay. So, let's do that. Let's, let's do the FY25 unpaid meal balances. Ernie, take it away.
Okay. So, good morning, uh, good morning.
Yeah.
Good evening. Um, so I'm here to share some information about the unpaid meal balance. And I made up some sheets here.
Not real numbers?
They're numbers. I think they're real. We need one more over here.
I said he made them up.
I don't need one.
Thank you.
Yeah, why are you over there?
Well, I'll need it for Joan. Here, I don't need one.
I think we're good, Larry. You should be able to have one.
This went up, Ernie.
So, um, in front of you, I just made a quick little snapshot here. Um, so, on 10/15, I approached Sam and Susan and just mentioned, hey, this meal balance is already at, you know, was, at the time was seventeen thousand something. So, this number here represents November 1st, 2025. And it lists the three schools that are what we call non-CEP schools. They're, they're faux pay schools. And the balance is twenty-three nine already. So, I'm, I'm super nervous and concerned that when we roll around June, we're looking at a eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollar unpaid meal balance. So, keep in mind, last year, from the two schools, we were carrying like a twenty-one thousand dollar negative balance roughly. So, we removed Fitch from CEP this year. And as we can see, that's kind of our biggest culprit, if you will, of folks that are unable to pay their negative balances. So, as we quickly look down, so some of the approved communications, you know, things that were allowed to do, and this is taken from state regulations and USDA regulations on what we're allowed to do because of the non-shaming act that was put in place. Email notifications go out to parents. That's allowed to do through Parent Square. Normal emails that are in our Power School system and our school cafe, because they're both pretty much linked up the same. We snail mail letters. So, we're putting, printing letters. We're putting them in envelopes. We're, we're spending postage on these things. Every Friday, we're sending them out. Okay? We automatically send out school cafe alerts. So, every, every Friday, it goes out automatically to parents. Hey, you're, you're below your, your minimum balance. And remember, parents can elect to, hey, when I get down to ten dollars in my kid's account, five dollars, or when it goes negative, let me know. So, they can select that. But we can automatically say, hey, you're, you're below the line. You're, you're negative. And that's what we do. Weekly reminders, every Friday, again, as I mentioned, it goes out. Payment options. Folks can, can pay by cash. Checks online is the easiest. And of course, is the most popular right now, which it has been for the last couple of years. People just pay online. But we'll gladly take an envelope of money that comes in with a, with a student at the elementary or the high school. We take checks. Sometimes they come in our office, because some of our parents are teachers. So, they just send it, you know. So, there's many payment options that are readily available. Things that are not permitted, which we never do, is obviously take food away from a kid, breakfast or lunch, you know. And that kid comes through and they put in their number and it says, you know, you owe whatever it is, you know. We, the kid don't even see, the student doesn't, doesn't even see that. So, they just move right on, put their number in, move right on. Public discussion, you know, we, we never tell a student in front, you know, while they're in line, hey, you owe money. Go home and tell your mom or dad to send in twenty bucks or something. We can't do anything like that. And my staff is super good, because, you know, we've, we've all been bit many times. You know, we, we think we're doing something innocently and, and we'll say something to a student, you know. And it does come back and, and bite us. So, we've learned over the years. We just quiet on everything. And any communication that could embarrass or single out a student is prohibitive. You know, even if we made announcements, you know, hey, you know, if you owe money, you know, don't come in for lunch or don't come in for breakfast. None of that happens. And just so everyone's aware, you know, students can always come in. They, they're allowed that first meal. They can come in. And even if they're negative, they still can come through. They cannot come back through and ask for a second meal, because it costs for a second meal. So, we're allowed to tell them, hey, you can't have that, because you don't have enough money on your account. Just like à la carte. They can't go and buy an ice cream or a juice or a fruit or something if they don't have money on their account. They're entitled to that, that breakfast that encompasses everything. And that lunch that encompasses everything, but they can't come back for a second. Currently, what we're doing is, and I say this, we've had a super great year. You know, Superintendent Austin's really been pushing us to, to grab every application that we can. So, we started this summer, we're at the military back-to-school rallies. We're at their field office. We were at the Balfour Beatty carnivals that they had. We were at all the school open houses. We had booths set up. We brought laptops with us. Easy, hey, mom, dad, why are you here? Just takes two minutes. Here, we'll sign you right up. And we did, we, we got a lot of folks, you know, signing up, which was super great. We sent out Parent Square reminders, you know, before school started, right when school started, few days after school started. We understand parents are getting bombarded with pamphlets and everything else. So, you know, we're trying to get ourselves in there as well. We, we did show parents how to, how to set their, their balances on their accounts. Hey, you know, when you get down to fifteen bucks, is that what you wanted? Do you want it ten? Do you want it five? Do you want it twenty-five? Tell us, we'll help you set it up. We had people come into Mary Morrison. We had like Open House Day. I even had muffins out, try to entice them. Usually, if you put food out, they'll come. You know, so we'd have, you know, mornings, you know, from eight to ten, especially for our military community that lives right there. We had folks walk in. Moms come in with the carriage and stuff, while the other kids are at school. We sent out weekly Friday reminders. I think we did a, a one or two robo-calls. We did family, um, at all school, at all three schools, we've done family outreach, you know, that, what I mean by that is, we know who has and hasn't put an application in a Fitch. So, what we do is we, you know, we, we, we find those, those parents, you know, we filter them out, and we know who hasn't, those families. And we send them an email. Hey, did you forget? Here's a link to sign up online, because we haven't got one for you. And sometimes, if they had an application in last year, they still have a thirty-day grace period from when school starts. So, that's when we really started sending these things out, was twenty-five days into the thirty. Hey, just so you, you know, you got five days left. We don't have an application for me yet. You know, here's the link, you know. I don't know which more we could do.
Well, and you did the campaign with the government shutdown, because they could sign up at that point, and that would last them for the whole year.
Right.
You really pushed that out, too.
I mean, as soon as that, that hit, we kind of sent out, hey, you know, if you're not getting a paycheck, please fill out a meal application, you know. And we got thirty, forty-something, which now qualifies them for free for the remainder of the year. Once you, once you put an application in, you're good to go for the whole school year. So, these are, and, and keep in mind, we work with families. If, if they have a big balance, you know, if we can get a hold of them, we'll gladly say, hey, Mrs. So-and-so, I see you owe a hundred and ten. You know, can you start, can you pay something? Can you do fifteen bucks a week? Can you do ten dollars a week? Anything would be appreciated, you know. So, I'll set up payment plans with these folks. Last year, we had about five families that did that. And only five out of the amount of money that was owed. But we had five families, and they were struggling. That, that's what gets me. It's, it's, those who really need it and are falling behind are the most willing to try to help with a little bit. I know that sounds strict, but it's true. And the ones that can well afford it and know it and have the resources will not send any money in. And I know who they are, which is the other irritating part. And I can't say nothing or anything like that. But we, you know, we encourage families to set up online payments. Again, when I was at the schools or these field days or whatever, we helped the families and tried to walk them through. We, we set up their accounts form right there. And now, what we're doing is, I'm gonna be, and gonna be, Rita, here's your November report. Every month, I'm, I'm sending Rita, you know, an update on what this meal negative balance is, so that we can all try to come up with a solution. And that leads me into trying to find a solution to this. The reason I'm here tonight is, one, to let you know of this balance and, and my concern. But the other thing is, is USDA, if you look at their regulations, they, they give you all kinds of suggestions, options, best practices, but they defer to your, to your, to your state, to follow their guidelines. So, I'm like, okay, so now I go to the state and we're reading and all of that. And as you read it, you know, the state's got all these great things. They pretty much copy USDA suggestions, best practices. And they refer it to the town's school districts' policies and stuff. They, they defer to that. So, nobody wants to get involved and be the ones to try to say, here's what you have to do. So, when I go back and review our charging policy, there's nothing here that, it talks about what we can and can't do. And, right, we're following all of this to the T. So, and maybe we've never come across this, you know, five years ago or whatever it was when this was created. But now, there's got to be a piece that says, okay, Ernie, here's, here's what we do. After thirty days or whatever, we're gonna reform to, I don't know. Okay? Thank you. I didn't want to say that. Yes.
Sam didn't give you one?
No. I don't think Jen has one.
Yeah, I don't have it. Oh, just, oh, is it in the back of this?
No.
No, I know.
But, you know, there's, my concern is, there's nothing here to address how we do it. Only thing that, if you read this here, and I get, I'm on page one. And if I go down towards the bottom, the only thing that it kind of addresses this is that I would refer the list of students to the homeless liaison, who's our Director of Pupa Personnel. And they're supposed to follow up with it. But that's the only thing that says, okay, here's the penalty. Here's what we're gonna do. You're not gonna be able to go on field trips. And again, I'm tossing out some horrible thoughts, if you will, things that we probably don't want to consider. What if we looked at a, a debt collection agency? Maybe only do the piece where they would send out a letter that is suggesting that, you know, hey, if you don't pay your bill, you know, there's a couple pieces to a debt, debt collection agency. There's the letter piece that really means, once I sent it, okay, I'm not following up with any action. But you get that in the mail as, as a parent or something. So, holy mackerel, you know, these people, now they're, they mean business. And then, there's the piece where it goes to next step. I'm gonna send you two or three more now with a couple phone calls. And then, of course, it comes to the piece where, okay, now, we're gonna, you know, file a claim against you or something, you know, we're gonna report you and, you know. My whole thing is, this superintendent or this board should not have to shoulder this burden at the end of the year. This is not your fault, nor mine. It's the people that walk into a nice restaurant, have a great meal, get up and walk out the front door, hey, thanks a lot, see you next week, you know. And they never pay their bill. So, I guess we, we have to come up with some, I need some direction on what to do, is, is really what I need. I'm at, I can't go any further with trying to get you your ninety thousand dollars by the end of the year. I mean, what I can do is certainly do my little fundraising and stuff. I'm not gonna be able to come up with ninety thousand for you.
I remember right around COVID, there was some very generous people that did donations.
Right.
That's right.
So, the brownies are ordinary brownies, right?
They are currently.
Ordinary brownies, maybe you could make them. Jenny, you seem to be champion of the bit.
Yeah. You know me, I'm always this softy some. I, I want kids to eat. I want them. And for the families that really do need it, hey, we need to help them out. But for the people that take advantage, that's just, that's disgusting to me. And it's taking advantage of our school system. And whatever this committee decides, I would be willing to support that pseudo-debt collection agency approach.
Pseudo, or?
I don't know what it, because he said it's not, well, it's doing the soft approach, one or two, three letters. And then, if they get moving, then maybe we don't need to actually file. So, I don't.
Payables Gallup used to send out ten ninety-nines, saying, by the top, you didn't pay the bill. Here you go, we're reporting what you owe us as income to the IRS.
Oh, I like that.
That's a, that's a nice.
I like that.
That's a nice.
Not sure the IRS likes that, but.
I know.
In a sense, it's true, you, you know. How about Howard Lee Schiff and East Hardwood, Dale S Cooper, three hundred bucks?
So, that's, that's a night, you know. But when Heather was here, Heather Summers was here, she had mentioned, if we tell her, hey, we're gonna be short, I came up with a hundred and twenty thousand, that she would be willing to like try for a fundraiser. Christine Conley was here as well, and so was Andres. So, not that I'm saying we have to shoulder. Like I said, maybe we shoulder it for the people who need it. But, you know, it's, it's shameful. And unfortunately, it's nothing we can do. But it's, goes to the fact that we're society's warning that some people think that, you know, it's a privilege, and it shouldn't be that way. Especially a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand can be like two or three teachers or paras or tutors that our kids really do need. So, whatever you need, Ernie, and whatever, I'd be willing to support you.
Jay, any questions?
Ernie, I know you're very involved at the statewide level. I'm just curious what you're hearing from other districts in terms of if they're seeing the same trend? And if any other districts are doing anything any, any differently that we can consider?
So, great question, Jay. So, we just recently had our SNA conference, and we had the state people with us and the state folks. And we were all talking about this. Groton is on the smaller side of the unpaid meal balance, believe it or not. This is a statewide, huge thing that stems from, you know, when the state pays for everybody's lunch and breakfast during COVID. And then, it slowly comes out of COVID. And then, we pay for a half a year of school lunches while the state tried to figure out how to pay the rest of it. But we continue paying breakfasts. And then, last year, all breakfasts were paid last year. And this year, it's cold turkey. So, it's a hard thing when you give something like that to try to pull it back. We're all seeing it at the state. And just recently, Superintendent Austin, you know, with other superintendents, you know, was on a, a call with the Commissioner, Charlene Tucker. And they talked about putting two point five million in a special fund, because it's such a problem. And it was, we all heard that news, you know, Susan did, and we're all like elated. Oh, my God, this is finally a little bit of relief that's coming to the districts. As Jen indicated, that could be a teacher, too. Could be numerous pairs. But it was pulled out within four days, because it was tied to something else and was pulled back out. So, we're all like, oh, my God, like, that was, ugh. So, Jay, it is a problem. It is something that we're working with. Again, with the lobbyists trying to get at least free breakfast put in for next year or something, because so far, nobody's running to us to help us with the money. And we do appreciate the two and a half million, but it's estimated to be four point seven five million. If all the trends were to continue, that the districts would be out of money. So, the two point five was a nice gesture, but they didn't realize how bad it is.
Most of the Alliance districts have full breakfast and lunch programs for all kids in their district. We were, of course, one of the last ones in, and I don't think we meet the measurement, the quota.
Great.
For free and reduced lunch, but for all.
If we went the collection way, is there a cost to getting a collection agency? And are you thinking about like having a minimum balance? Like, you know, how much a minimum amount that people owe? Like, if they only owe ten dollars, you don't send them to the collection agency?
Right.
If they owe X amount, twenty-five, then you might, or whatever.
There is a fee. I don't know quite what that is, because I really didn't look that deep into it. But I can bring you back information on that. And you guys could set the amount. Hey, anything over a hundred dollars, those are the ones that we want to try to make aware that they owe this balance.
Are there people that owe over a hundred dollars?
Oh, yeah.
Over five?
No.
I just wanted to say, this has been a topic on CASBO, which is the Business Managers Association across Connecticut. And so, a lot of districts are feeling this. I haven't seen any of them start talking about a debt, you know, a collection agency. So, I can try to reach out and see if any districts are already doing it, because I do also believe it should be put in our policy, especially the limit and the, you know, and all of that. So, I can reach out to the CASBO members and find out if anybody else is doing it.
No, definitely.
Collection outfits usually collect fifteen percent. I don't know, on small things, what they would collect. But fifteen percent's the most common number I've seen. All right. Any else?
Any other suggestions other than this, Ernie?
I mean, I would put their name in the paper, because they're not getting our emails or letters and stuff. And I want to make sure that I'm not missing their, their, that they're missing my communications. Perhaps we don't have their updated information. And I'm just trying to put them in the paper. But that would not probably be.
They'll take your crystal award.
Jay?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, congratulations, Ernie. I know you received Food Service Director of the Year from the state organization. And we appreciate everything you and your team do for our students. And we appreciate everything you and your team do for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jen.
I'm sorry, like, I just want to, maybe we can, Susan, maybe you can reach out to Heather. I mean, she did offer it. If we get an event, maybe we tell her to help target like 125,000, something around there.
How do you, how do you, you know, this is like Jimmy's Kids or something. It isn't, it's like, please, let's.
No, I know.
Fundraiser.
Or maybe 50 or something.
For people that can afford to pay it, yeah, that's the thing.
That's the, that's the thing that gets me. But it's almost like, but maybe it just looks like they can afford to pay and maybe they really can't.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, I was.
You know, appearances are deceptive sometimes.
They, they don't because they don't do a lot of things. They, they won't because they, they have a lot of pride, something like that. So what proportion do we, we suspect is just people who truly can't pay? And how much of this is real skunks?
60% can pay.
Okay. Well, that's $60,000 out of 100,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, listen, what happens is when you're trying to serve a defendant, if you can't, if they don't accept service, I mean, you tried all the methods, you asked the court for permission to actually publish it in the paper.
Kind of what I was thinking.
Last resort, I mean. Being personal.
No.
Just run out of rope here. Okay, anything else on this topic?
So what are we doing then?
Oh, what are we, what are we doing? Who's, who's we?
I'm checking with Heather Summers.
Okay, so.
I'm checking CASBO.
And I can also check with the superintendents because we do have the commissioner every once a month on Friday morning.
So, okay, so we should have a policy. So who's going to originate this policy? Usually, policy committee originates the policy, but they're going to say, well, what do you want? They're going to look at, look at us.
We need to do research first and then we could send it to them.
Was that, I'm sorry.
Is it updating this?
No. I mean, this is, yeah, this is the latest.
But is it updating this policy or no?
I think it would be.
We would be updating this policy, right? So the question is.
Right.
What can we add to this?
Right.
Like you said, the dollar on this, would, you know, should we put in here the option to go the collection route? Or at least signal that we would go the collection route? Put in a dollar figure, you know, if you owe more than X, something like that. That's something for us to consider. But I mean, I mean, we could come up with numbers.
You want me to make recommendations to the policy committee?
Yeah, that'd be.
That'd be great, yeah.
Yeah.
Your group.
Yeah, exactly what I was going to do.
So the best to the state, to the town, to us, to the policy committee.
Yeah, maybe Ernie, Rita can check out what they're checking out. And Susan, and then come back to the finance committee.
Right, okay.
And then from there, the portfolio.
Give that.
Thank you.
All right. Save your best one for last.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ernie.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
All right, what's your, what's your, your pleasure? Do we want to do the op review or the budget calendar?
Well, the budget calendar is pretty quick.
Do we want to save the op review for last and let other people go? Or is everybody here for the party?
Well, Rita has, I'm not coming to.
I'm not sure how long the op review is going to be.
Why don't we do the budget calendar and then do the op review? There's not a whole lot to report, but there's something to report, so.
But this has a lot of question marks. Anyway, so, okay, budget calendar, that's attachment two. Whoever wants to present or comment, you're off.
Well, we're in the middle of collecting a lot of good information, so I'll let Rita go. We've met with the principals and the directors to say, give them marching orders on how to fill out these templates. And they've been delivered or are being delivered.
Yeah, all the schools have them, have the templates. And I've met with some of them that have questions, but, you know, they have the templates, which are similar to last year, they said. So there's not a lot of questions. They, that, the due date is next Friday, November 14th, so.
Does it have the actuals from last year and then what's been, what's been budgeted for this year?
Budgeted and covered already this year.
Okay, budgeted and covered.
But I've been sending the actuals to them because in some cases, like we have a new principal at Charles Barnum, right? And so I've been sending them the detail of what was spent last year. So they just need to reach out to me and ask for the detail of what's been, what was spent last year. Because getting the actuals and not knowing what's behind it, like the vendors that are behind it, yeah.
And we do know that we had to cut 2.4 million dollars in the end. And so there are things that are under budgeted. And that's some of the things that came out in the op review that, you know, we are often under budgeted, but that's no fault of this board. You know, we go in asking for what we didn't need.
Well, I don't know either way, actually, with, when they refer to under budget, whether they mean under our budget or under the adjusted budget after they've come back with their report, but we'll get to that. So as far as this calendar goes, this is sort of parallels last year's, as far as we know?
Yeah, it's pretty close, yeah.
No more or less aggressive than last year's?
Susan, I thought we were going to change that Thursday, January 22nd to the following week. Because I'm going to be, wow.
Oh, yeah, we were.
And that actually is a GA, AGSA, but that starts at four.
Okay, so we're going to move that date to sometime that week of January 26th.
Yeah.
Okay.
Jen.
So what I would like to suggest, like where it says budget work session, and then we go through elementary, special ed, secondary. Just knowing how we functioned last year, if maybe you guys want to consider doing it by function code or what was the other, not the function codes, but.
Object codes?
Object codes or something. Because what our, what we did last year is they opened up the binder and they went into 3312, 3313. And I might be referring to the wrong numbers. And there was more sense of comfort going that way rather than, oh, this is the elementary, this is the high school. And so I, Susan, you know, Rita, if that's something you guys would consider, because I think it will alleviate additional meetings that are not on this calendar that will be added. So, you know, just taking the binder book and then just going by the category, not the categories. It's not, it's not the function. It's like the department codes, but they're like four digits. I wish I had the budget binder written to me.
Go on.
What I'm used to.
Yeah.
I'm just going to, you know, put it out there. I'm not used to going by function because you can have the same function in different departments. I am used to going by department by object code, which is the three different account, three digit count code, which is salaries, benefits, other professional services. It's what we've been discussing, the 400s, 500s, you know. So that's what I'm used to, but you know.
Let's do it your way and what you're used to.
I just think it's so granular if you're going by function in each department because.
But you haven't experienced what we went through last year. So if you, if you want to schedule it the way you did it in your old place and say, hey, this is the format we're taking, direct us to do that.
I mean, it doesn't specify here whether it's by function or object. So it's just saying elementary and special ed, right?
Yeah, but then they're going to hop to just those topics.
Well, I think, I think Jay recommended this a while ago, but starting with the 300s, the 400s, the 500s and the top 10, it really shows us what we're mostly spending our money on and who are these vendors that we're supporting and that kind of thing. And I think that, you know, if we can get through that so that really the board has a clear understanding of those functions, I think it'll make it go smoother. Jen's right.
Because we're going to go through, like, I, I, I'm just like, you know, getting PTSD from last year. We're going to go through, we're going to go through it by elementary, special ed, regular boarding. Then we'll have six other meetings to go through, like, each of the categories, you know what I mean? So if we just bypass the segregation of type and have it the way you used to do it, I think it would just go smoother.
Because, yeah, but going by function is not telling you what's in that account. It's telling you, this is all instruction, or this is all special ed, or this is all maintenance and facilities. Going by object is telling you salaries, benefits, other professional services, purchase services. So those, that's the difference.
Yeah.
You know, I, I'm, I'm used to going by object, but.
Yeah, let's, let's, I mean, I would like to do that just to make our life easier, especially if we have, I don't know if you're going to change it, you know, the little pie chart to show like salaries, benefits is like 80%. So if we can get rid of the 80%, and now we're just working with the 20 so far, you know. But going and looking at that 80% rate, our, our staffing FTEs need to be on target, like, because and then like we could do, which they didn't do last year, average, right? This is average salary for blah, blah, blah. And, you know, so that they can get a feel for it. Because there's always this underlying issue that we faced last year that something was being hidden when it wasn't, right? So if we can say like, hey, there's like 400 people, X, Y, and Z, and this is roughly the amount, we're not going to pinpoint everyone's salaries, you know what I mean? But just have it, teachers' costs is, parents' costs is, whatever. And have it like, this is the type of positions we have and these are the averages. And then it should be very close to what we have in the budget. And then go through just something to supplement that, hey, this is 80% of our costs. And then trust us, this is our salaries, benefits and bonus. There's some people with that angst and I want to avoid that this year. So whatever you used to do in your old place, you know, I think this board will be open because we all experienced, you know, something that wasn't ideal. So at least that's me, you know.
You actually, you actually think, you think by disposing of the 80% of the expenditures, we're going to save time? Because what we do is we spend most of our time on the smaller dollar.
Yeah, I know, I know, but you know.
Millions of dollars we get rid of in five minutes. It's the $100,000 that we argue about.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Is that how you usually do the budget, by object code, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it is detailed by each account number, yes, but it, it's typically by object code. And I can do it by function. I'm just a little concerned because every department might have an instructional function, a support services function. So then you're not really knowing what goes into that code. Let's say for the, for a school, you don't, you don't know what vendors are actually getting paid out of that. If you look at the objects, like we were looking at the top 10 and 300s, you know, you know, you all know and understand and it's clearer. Yeah, I'll think about some things and, and, and I'm going to have to look at all of the things that were presented last year to come up with a easier way.
Yeah.
It wasn't, Groton wasn't the only district that had a hard budget year.
Yes, correct.
For other reasons.
Like stoning too.
Even Wyndham, it, it was very long and drawn out because, and it wasn't really because of, it was just because coming off of COVID and coming off all those funds, you know.
Challenging.
It was challenging in a lot of districts.
Do you think it's easier for the board to understand the budget book by object code or function code? I guess to me, that's the bottom line.
I think by object, and I'm going to say why I think it was brought up in the ops review, but I am going to say that by object, major objects, we are not supposed to go over budget. That's a statute. So I think focusing on the objects and making sure those are budgeted accurately more than focusing on the function. Because our budget transfer policy says by function, you guys have to approve. But it really should be added by major object because that's where we cannot go over budget. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I know, maybe it's like.
Yeah, like salaries, that, those categories, and there's only about 10.
Yeah.
You know, those categories.
And maybe you host a session where you reorient us, right? Because for however many years, I've only been on for two years, but for however many years they've been doing it that way. So maybe you could say, hey, I'm doing it this way. And if I tell you the object code, these are the top three function codes that these costs reside in. I don't know if it's going to satisfy their appetite, you know, but at least it's a try, you know. And it's almost like, hey, this works in my prior district. Give us, give me a shot and let me do it this way.
I mean, obviously salaries, you hit every function.
Of course, yes, we know that.
So, yeah, so it's like.
Yeah, and I don't, and this year, I took all of the benefits and we stuck it in one function code, I think. I can't remember which one in the budget book.
District wide?
Yeah, the district.
And it should be in one, in my opinion.
Yes, agreed.
About your monthly reports and your quarterly reports, that's how that's organized as well.
Right, especially my summary page is by object.
That's what you're looking at on a regular basis.
So maybe like we, yeah, maybe we put the object codes first and then hopefully it, you know, and then we slowly go away from the other view. I don't think that will happen this year, but.
I mean, for us, looking at our function codes, you know, what was left behind for HR and, and business and superintendent, assistant superintendent, you know, we really got reduced. But that's what I, that's my guide to know what I have to spend for the whole year. And that's what we look at for us.
Jay, you have anything you want to add?
Sorry. Oh, I do believe that the Budget Procedure Committee is going to be discussing this.
No, they're all done, Jay, Jay, they're all done.
We're good.
Oh, they are done?
They're all done.
I thought, I thought they were going to weigh in on this, but.
My, my impression is that they concluded their business. I actually think I heard words out of you.
Yes, we did. But yeah, that's my only suggestion when I saw the calendar was like to, we'll put like review by object code or something in its place, in its stead.
And even the object codes are, have to be looked up because an object code should be what you're buying and what you're purchasing, not what type of purchase. Type is function code, like special ed. So I will be looking at those and asking to collapse some of them because if it's instructional supplies for special ed, the function tells you it's special ed and the object tells you it's instructional supplies. We have some object codes that say special ed. That doesn't make sense. Special ed, special ed, you know, you have to give you an example.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Thank you, Rita.
Oh, no, thank you, Rita. That was my only comment.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
We'll look at this with the team and then send out what we think and then you guys can weigh in and just let us know.
And me and Laurie are definitely working a lot together about the FTEs. Yeah, no, thank you.
We've been talking about that.
Talking about them and everything, yeah.
What are you going to do with this?
So the suggestion is that we go by object code instead of function code. So we're going to have to realign this a little bit and then we'll bring it back to you to show you. I think the benefits usually tends to come later. I was looking at when we actually did benefits, it's down after the public hearing, like in February. Laurie, is that just because that's when they can give us the information for the following year?
I think it has been pushed later in the process because we're, a lot of times we don't have renewal numbers.
Yeah, oh, I agree because even.
So we might have to do salaries, skip over benefits and do benefits.
I mean, obviously I'll have a number in there, but it, but it does change once we hear from MDG and Anthem and all of that. Yeah.
That's always been.
That's always like February, yes.
All right, thank you for that. Now, let's give our toes into the op review.
So we were provided. So we were provided, um, uh, the actual ops review, and it's a preliminary draft, from what I understand, it's written all over it, and then there was a slideshow that was done for the town council. And then we had gotten an email from John Bird that talked about priority items, some of the councillors had said, so that was a lot of stuff that we could look through. When we first looked at it, one of the things we noted were that there were some recommendations under all the different categories, purchasing, you know, and so I, we created a Google document that would look at all of those, um, recommendations, so that we could then respond. So we're, we're going to be, we set up the Google doc, which was a big deal, but then we're going to start going through item by item and responding to what they're saying. When we looked at the priorities, so we did notice that many of these things have already been done, because we noticed them as priorities. You know, even when Ray was here, and then when Rita got here, so already much of this is underway, or has been completed. But there are still some other things that we have to tackle. So, and there are some things that might even need, um, some accuracy adjustments, and, you know, an explanation of why they're done a certain way. But I'm just going to say that and let Lori and Rita, you know, this is just kind of looking at it. We've got a process, I think it's going to be a good process, and, um, and I think we'll be able to deliver then this to the board, you know, this document that will show what are the recommendations, what are our responses, you know, almost like a checklist, that what's been completed, um, what needs adjusting, um, and maybe what was just misunderstood, because that could happen too, when you're, you know, interviewing a lot of people, and the information that you get, so.
Now, it needs to, the board, though, needs to go to the town council.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but I'm going to give it to the board first, and then, and then we'll send it. John says by the...
Well, you can do, you can send them stuff now. They didn't say that send us all, everything by December thirty-first. So if you have stuff now that you're already in process of doing, send it to them, you know. Reconciliations, I hope we're doing that now, we're in the process of doing that, just send it off to them. You don't, like I said, they don't, they don't want everything, but they want it as you go along, almost, if that's possible.
What's, what's easier?
Yeah.
My, here's my observation, the, the detail, you know, there's a slideshow, and then there was a detail. The detail's seventy pages long. And I do want to go through with Lori and Susan every single detail to come up with an accurate response. So because I have the audit and budget going on right now, the audit being the number one priority to finish, um, I would like to take the time with them to explain everything. But we wanted to let you know that the top priorities are already done or taking care, like, being done.
Like the top ten.
The top ten that, that you guys got an email on, right? The top ten, I think some of them aren't even control issues, they're just recommendations. I'll give you an example, um, moving food service into our EIN number, and them not having a separate EIN number. That is something that we would have to do on January first. We can't do that right now because of W2s, 1099s. It would be too much of a messy situation, right? But it's something that we're already talking to Ernie about, we're already discussing how we're going to move over. And to be honest, my staff are excited, because they won't have to do two payrolls, they won't have to do two 1099s, two separate check runs every two weeks. So, um, so, yeah, some of them are being already done, but to give a formal response, I want to take the time to respond to every recommendation. Does that make sense? If you have some questions on...
In an organized way.
In an order, yeah.
Really organizes us. I mean, can I jump in about the top ten priorities from the, that Lori was mentioning in the email from the town council? We spent time on those, because they, they, those were priorities. And, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Rita, but we, and Susan, we went through those in detail, and we identified they were all taken care of pre-audit results, um, not audit, uh, operational review results, other than what you had just mentioned. All the others are items that you had already taken care of before the report even came. So, um, so I think we could probably respond to those priority items between now and then, and share that with the council, and then go through the report in much more detail, because there's a lot of detail in the report, there's a lot to unpack, there's, there's validation that needs to happen, make sure that the information that's in the report is, is, um, it, it aligns to what our understanding of our processes are, and, you know, what needs to change. And in looking over the report initially, I do think it's a mixed bag of items. It's items that we've already addressed and taken care of before the report even came, there's more of that in the report. There are items that maybe we could improve on, there's items that I think, uh, we have other controls in place for other reasons that may not be represented in the report. So it's kind of a mixed bag of items that I agree with Rita. I think we need to go through and do a thorough job to make sure that we review all the recommendations and prepare the appropriate responses in much more detail.
Well, that's what I would expect you all to do. So, what I'm saying now, is like you're saying, Lori, if you already know, if you already have things done already, just send that off to them. You know what I mean? Like Lori said, you already did some of the top ten priorities, so if you already did it, just shoot you an email, we did this, we did this, we did that.
I mean, what do you guys think? I mean, I think we could tackle the top ten.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the, that's the part we feel most confident in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're not expecting you to have answers.
There's so many recommendations in that report.
Yeah, they're not expecting you to, I have plenty of time to talk to some of these town councils, they're not expecting me to, um, have answers by December, you know, have all this done by December thirty-first. I mean, they know you're doing the audit, they know you're doing our budget, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's the audit I am concerned about, because I, because I have all new staff, it is taking us a little bit longer to prepare and give all the documentation that the auditors are asking for. I have a huge list, and John Bird can confirm, that, you know, we have to get that stuff to them, and that's what I'm focused, I'm having my staff focus on right now, is getting those things to the auditors. So we can definitely, um, come up with responses to the top ten. I think that's, yeah, pretty soon. But like I said, there, most of them are in place.
Jen, something to say?
I'm good with just responding to the top ten.
Cool.
With a note saying that the other items are, um...
Under review.
Under review.
Yeah.
Uh, Jay?
Uh, yes, um, I know we're going to probably be discussing some of the view, and I know the ongoing updates, so I don't really want to get into the weeds tonight. But I did have a, a question, um, with regard to consolidating the, um, the food service. You know, I was curious what Ernie and, and the state think about that. I always thought that the state wanted it segregated, because they're segregated funds. And so I'm, I'm curious about how, um, folding them in is going to affect, um, the state requirements. It's, I, you know, we're obviously, we're not going to get into that tonight. Uh, it's too much in the weeds, but, um...
I could comment.
How we keep it segregated and put it into the same pot at the same time. So, um, the other thing, somebody had asked me, um, and, you know, I don't know where, where this came from, you know, obviously, uh, people are talking about this, there's a lot of information out there, and somebody was saying that the board doesn't receive financial reports every month, and, and of course, we do, and in fact, we do receive detailed financial reports every month from the accounting software for many, many years. I think that only just recently changed with a previous, uh, business manager, that it went to their own sort of spreadsheet. I was led to believe it had something to do with technical issues, I know e-finance is, um, you know, is a challenge, and it would be nice if we were on the same system as the, as the town. So it seems like that would be an easy fix, though, because that's where we did it for probably twenty years. And I'm not sure why that changed, but I think that would be easy to go back on, so. Anyways, like I said, there's a lot to, to digest. I'm glad to hear that a lot of it was already identified. I know that Ray was working on it, um, for years, and, uh, and Rita's sort of hit the ground running, and I appreciate all that work, and look forward to the updates.
I can comment on both of those if you want.
Oh, yes, please. Sorry.
So as far as the food service, um, it's, it's a mixed bag across the state. There are some, um, and I, someone of them, Wyndham, was not separate, did not have a separate EIN number. If it wasn't for Groton Public Schools, that food service would not exist. So in my opinion, it's, yes, it's an enterprise fund with a separate, um, a separate fund, and we have separate funds for grants, we have separate funds, so they already are segregated, um, from the general fund. So I don't see a problem with the state having a problem with, when there's other districts out there that already use the same EIN. And one of the reasons for that is that Ernie's EIN is not tax exempt, they are not a governmental agency. We are tax exempt by statute. So, so I'm just trying to give you some examples of why it should be combined, and I do agree with the Ops review on, years and years ago, they had separate EINs, and now a lot of Board of Eds and food service have the same, same EIN. On the second, what was the second thing? I forgot the second.
Where's the second one, Jay?
Sorry? Oh, the financial.
The financial statements that, that we either want.
So the financial statements, I run it right from e-finance, I can attach the e-finance version, I, I just printed it up into Excel. So I can definitely give you the, um, the e-finance version attached.
This was the for, a format difference.
The reason I pulled it into Excel was to make those comments, you know, the comments on the side that give you guys...
Yeah, clarity.
Clarity, yeah, what's going on in those accounts, if they're over or under. So that's one of the reasons I was pulling it into Excel, but I have it saved from e-finance and PDF, so the, the numbers are going to be the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as, as long as the numbers are the same and the information is there, then I don't really care who generates it. It could be, it could be the tooth fairy.
From now going forward, I should have attached it, because I always did in Wyndham.
So you attached your Excel spreadsheet and the report.
And the community's report, which will be on e-finance, yeah, correct. So I have no problem with that, I did see that, and it definitely will be from now going forward attached.
Does that sound good, Jay?
Uh, yes, yeah, I mean, again, I'm not questioning it, I just, like I said, there's this, you know, there, there are people that, that took from this that for some reason that we're not getting the reporting. I think it's strictly a formatting thing, you know, we're getting the same information as you would if you printed it out of e-finance. You know, I have no problem with that, I just wanted to push back a little bit on this idea that, like, the reporting wasn't being done, and it certainly has, and it's in the minutes of all the meetings that we can go back and review.
Yeah, I've, I've heard that too, and it always puzzled me. You guys don't get reports, I, we get a lot of paper, we get a lot of stuff. Yeah, so that's, that's a puzzle, anyway.
Are you planning to, when you go through this, prioritize, like, what's important first, and second, and third?
Yeah, especially by, like, either, if it's an internal control thing that we have to fix, that's obvious our priority, but if it's just a recommendation, which is, the food service is just a recommendation, but it's also an efficiency thing that I want implemented January first, so that my staff are, we read the, of extra payrolls and extra pay runs, yeah. So we will prioritize.
So in a sense, some of these recommendations really are helpful in making some efficiencies.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, we're looking at it that way.
Yeah, that's why a lot of board members were in favor of it, to help us be more efficient, so, um, so that's good. Do you need any help in your office? Are you good with the number of people you have in your office?
Good one position that hasn't been filled.
Yeah, but we do have a temp, um, filling in, and I have been talking to Susan about human staffing, and making sure that the open position is a position that we, um, talk about before filling, so that we get the correct position in there, you know, not just another accountant, or not just, I shouldn't say it like that, but do we need, um, different levels? That's what I'm used to, um, I'm used to levels, because of the workflow, because of the approval process that needs to happen. I have to, right now, approve everything. So, yeah, we've been talking. So I believe I am, because I, I've had to train a lot of people, you know, you know, I have new staff, so now that they're, they're, um, learning, and I think going forward with all of these efficiencies, we're going to be, we're going to be okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not a budget issue, it's just, we budgeted for the, for X number of positions, you just need to fill them properly, that's all.
Just one more.
Okay, one more, yeah. Okay. Anything else? I want this going twice.
What about Lori? We don't normally have Lori here, so let's take full advantage of her.
That's right, Lori. What do you have to say for yourself?
I, I share, I already shared.
We team on this, you know, kind of work together, and we try to figure it out, and, you know...
You tag team.
A tag team.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, folks.
Right, so like, those segregation of duties stuff have already been put in place, too?
Yeah, I mean, some, yes, some we're, we're taking a look at, but there's also other, I think I had mentioned, you know, without going into too deep of detail, Rita and I need to spend some time, because, um, there are, there are controls in place for other reasons, so we've got to really assess the recommendations versus reasons why we have controls in place, and why we may be doing what we're doing. So we're going to kind of look at both, and try and see if we can, um, see where it makes sense to make change, and not give up controls that we may already have in the process.
Do we have process maps in place that show, here are the functions, and then this is the control? Do we already have that in place?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
All right. Once again, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
So, next topic, Director of Buildings and Grounds Report. Mr. DBG.
Yeah, so I guess the, uh, good evening.
No, I can just talk about the CB roof you've gotten, I had on that, so.
All right. Solar panels.
Thank you.
So, uh...
A bright spot.
Regarding the, uh, solar panel issue, I think Katie is online now.
I see, I saw her. I think I see her right now.
So Katie, do you want to address this?
Oh, we can't hear you, Katie.
No sound.
Not sure why.
She is unmuted.
I thought they were coming in person. Where did they live?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone, and appreciate you providing us the opportunity to chat with you this evening. My name is Steve Felton, I serve as a Senior Manager of Market Engagement for the Connecticut Green Bank's Solar Marketplace Assistance Program. Also work for the Solar Math Club, um, probably hear me say if you find it going to be made presentation. We might have to break this, um, what we're going to provide you in this overview of the project that we're going to go forward from today. So for anybody who's not familiar, the Connecticut Green Bank is a private public state agency founded in 2011.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Is this the same presentation she already gave? If you don't leave, you have to show them again.
Is this, Katie, is this the same presentation that's already done with the board, the full, the full board?
Um, yeah, so we, we met with the committee as a whole on...
She has questions.
Yeah, I'll take them back.
So I guess that would be for any questions that we might have.
Hey, they had questions at this committee of the whole answer meeting. I don't know if she wrote them down. I don't know.
Yeah. So if this is the same presentation, then do we have questions? Is there anything she wants to add?
Yeah, does she have any updates?
Yeah, does she have any updates since the last time we met?
Did she jot down the questions, did she jot down the questions people asked?
You can ask what you want. You're empowered.
Because during your presentation, people ask questions and you're supposed to get back to us on the answers. I don't know if you jotted them down. But to go through this presentation again is senseless to me because we already heard it.
Okay, great. Um, my understanding, I think we answered the questions in the last meeting. I think the only thing that was outstanding was to do an analysis of the existing projects. We know it was kind enough to send over utility bills, but we are missing a few bills before we can do the final detailed analysis. Just to give you a quick snapshot and maybe that, that is helpful. Um, you know, the, the question was how much are the existing systems? And presented information at the last meeting that built systems where we're producing above and beyond what we had earlier promised for you. Um, and we also did a review of the utility bill that we have on the end. Got there a few months this way, so it's a full year for the analysis. But for Mystic River Magnet, um, looked at six months of bills. Your current offset rate is the average under bill that can be offset by solar. You're currently paying over a course about 18.6 cents per kilowatt hour. And the PPA rate that you have for the production that is coming from the solar system is 7.9 cents. That gives you kind of an apple back to apples comparison, paying about 18.61 cents. Whether the charge is under billed, that can be offset by solar. So that's what you're paying to the utility. For every kilowatt hour of electricity that's produced by this system, the solar on site, you're being charged 7.9 cents. So your savings is the gap between the two. And snapshot in terms of your cost of electricity, we only added, um, six months of bills that we analyzed for that site to missing. Um, that can be a good idea. And then for the middle school, looked at nine months of bills. And the average offset rate was 17.95 cents, what is paying the utility company, um, compared to a, a PPA rate of 7.6 cents. And your savings is the gap difference between the two. So for every kilowatt hour of electricity that is produced by this solar system and producing that power, that fixed rate contract for 20 years. That's substantially below what you're currently paying to the utility. To my knowledge, I believe that was the only outstanding question from that meeting. But I don't know if you have any other questions that you would like us to address.
So what do you think, um, would be the savings for Fitch High School? Would it coincide with this? Is it exactly the same kind of a plan or is it slightly different?
No, it's different. So the, the same solar systems are designed to allow them to get an incentive, meaning they're tied in behind your existing utility meter on site. And we are producing electricity that you're purchasing at a discounted rate. This project at Fitch is completely different than that, um, in that it is designed utilizing a new incentive program, which is called the Non-Residential Renewable Energy Solutions Program, or NRES. And through that program, instead of tying in behind your utility meter on site, you would actually be feeding the electricity back to the grid. And you're going to receive an ongoing monetary credit on your utility bill. I do not have an exact answer for you in terms of what your expected savings is going to be. Um, just as a reminder from the last meeting, what we're looking to do is receive your blessing to participate in our upcoming RFP, where we group your project with other municipal projects that we have in development throughout the state of Connecticut. It'll be a portfolio approach, goes out to competitive bid for contractor selection. And once we have those bids from contractors, it's not yet, we come back to you and say specific numbers to review when they're contacting decisions off of.
And we did.
And for that, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was going to say, we did approve that, didn't we?
We did.
We did approve the RFP.
Because they stated that there was like an urgency because they had to, um, put the RFP. So, um, I don't know if the RFP was submitted since the time we met till now.
I'm sorry, Ms. Sheldon. Continue.
No, that's okay. Um, so the RFP has not yet been released. It will be until we receive what's called PIA guidance. So that's a, a new requirement to lock in the investment tax credit for your project. Um, there's a phase out of the investment tax credit at the federal level. You're within the period of time where we are looking to run an RFP and do what's called state harboring. That essentially allows us to contract with you. And select a contractor. Green Bank would need to lean forward on procuring materials that meet the specified requirements at the federal level in order to lock in our tax credit. So that's, um, kind of an overview of the requirements. And we've not yet received that PIA guidance. Expecting really anything now, but we're anticipating it will be probably in December or very early January, depending on when that guidance comes out.
Where do you get that guidance from?
Um, the federal government. So the, the government set down currently, um, and that's what we're anticipating that, um, to be determined on actual release date.
So you, you, can you forecast how much you think we'll be saving by doing the solar panels at the high school?
No.
No?
Um, it would be a disservice to try to put some numbers in front of you at this point because there's a lot of, you know, shifts at the, at the federal level which are impacting contractors that are actively developing these projects. So we need that guidance in place in order to accurately solicit proposals from contractors working in the market.
And again, one board member wanted me to ask you, just to make sure that there's no cost to the Board of Ed.
That's correct.
Okay.
So we provided technical assistance and project development support for this project at no cost through the Solar Math Program. And then we would love to develop the project through a third party ownership structure, um, where either Green Bank or whatever financing partner is building the system. So there is no assessment required on your end. And there is no cost for the technical assessments and project development support out of program makers.
Thank you.
Just lay back and think of England. Jay? Anything?
Uh, no, I, um, I believe we just now have to wait. I just, the, the one thing I don't recall from the last meeting, does the town have to, uh, last this project in any way before it goes forward? Or have we done everything now that we need to do to at least get the quote?
Good question.
The town, right?
Are you aware?
You know, Sarah, what we did with the town when we had the other projects.
We, we let them know about it, but we didn't require that at the time.
Because there are technically town facilities, so. Okay.
Maybe if, if we give John Gert a call maybe tomorrow, we'll just check that out to see if there's anything we need to do.
We didn't do it before, Jay, and, but we'll check to see if we need to do it now. I think that's the answer.
That's pretty much, yeah.
So, you know, we're assuming that we don't have to do it now, but you know what that means. Don't assume. Check it out.
Trust but verify.
Yeah.
Jay, anything?
Nope, but I'll say thank you.
Okay, cool.
I do, yeah. Katie, uh, are you missing information that we need to provide to you? And if so, um, can I help with that? Or are you already in communication with, uh, the finance department?
Um, I followed up with Rita on the bills.
Okay.
About that analysis. Um, as we get closer to the RFP release, I'll be reaching out with a few questions, um, for information that we typically include. But outside of that, I can work that at this point in time. If you find that you do need additional approvals at the town level, please let me know. I'm happy to, uh, get myself available for that as well.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing how this all, you know, ends up. So thank you.
My pleasure. Have a great weekend.
You too.
Thank you.
Well, now we're on to Charles Barnum Roof Update.
Right, so, um, as of today, it's the 5th, right? Uh, at 8:54 this morning, we got a response from, um, actually, the response came just before that, but, um, the, the state DAAS, the Grants Administration, gave us some information that Rita responded to, that we will work on the application and get the documentation that they have requested. So there were a few items that are, are missing. So, um, apparently it didn't move forward after, uh, after Ray had submitted it previously. So in between business managers, so we're getting that information together. I, you're only allowed to submit it for the first 10 days of the month. So I would say that we presently have enough time to get that ready for, to go for December, the first 10 days of December to get to the state to, uh, make the application for the project in hopes of doing it this coming summer.
How long have we been working on this, Sam?
Too long.
20 years.
Three, three or four, it's been a long time. Too long.
Because how long do we have? Five years? Because I hadn't talked about it at the time.
We now we're good with the CIP, but, uh, again.
It has to, and it's a job that needs to be done this summer, so we really have to be on it.
Yep. So.
So it's going to, are you thinking that it's going to cost us more money now from, if the town council gave us now?
Until it goes out to bid, I, I couldn't say one way or the other.
And if it does cost us more money, it has to go in our budget? Or do you go back to the town council and?
Well, we could, we could, if it goes, if, if the bids come in, until you put it out to bid and get the, receive the bid, you don't know. But if the bids came in higher, um, I would say the first, first consideration would be to ask them to, unless we had money sitting in a, a little account somewhere. If we could fund it ourselves, um, then maybe we would do it ourselves. But if, if we can't, then I would say that we'd go back to town council and, and request an additional allotment.
Well, this has to be the case with every CIP. You, you get an estimate, so it's going to be 50,000, 100,000, 500,000. It's approved. And you're right, you'd have no idea what the costs are until you get the bids. And so I just, I don't know how often that happens, where the lowest bid comes in and it's higher than what was approved by the, by the council. But there's got to be a fix for that, so.
We've been pretty lucky since I've been here. We haven't gone overbid yet.
That's us. Could happen with the town too.
Right.
Yeah, because these are all estimates when they approve them.
Do you think this will be it, Sam, right? With the state?
Um, the, the state's always been very cooperative with us, so I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do it. The, um, the person that Rita has been communicating with has, has gotten back to her in a very timely fashion. So I think we're on the right track.
I think she knows her too. She's had a history in our state, so.
Jay has his hand up.
Yeah, Jay.
Yes, I'm, I'm very concerned about the number of years that it's taken to get to this point. And I'm very concerned about the number of times that the application has been returned. So I'm wondering if there's somebody we can reach out to. Um, is there somebody that, um, has experience with the state, um, maybe with the town? Or is this something we need to get our, our representatives involved with? Um, because to Beverly's point, um, inflation over the past three years has not been going down. There will not be enough money for this roof, I'm afraid. Um, and this constant returning of the applications is mind boggling to me. Um, and, and now we're going to have to pay for it. So I'm just wondering, you know, who can we reach out to? To get a definitive answer, because I'm, I'm concerned that, okay, because we've already met since November. Now we're hoping for December. It, you know, this has to be in place by next summer. I mean, you, you can't be doing a roof while school's in session. So I'm, I don't know, I'm just, my mind is boggled by how long this has taken, given that we've done multi-million dollar projects in this town, built huge buildings, some of the largest in, in the history of the state. And we, now we can't put a roof on an elementary school, so. Anyway, let's just reach out to whoever might have the technical expertise to guide us through this process. Thank you.
Sam, can you give us an example of, okay, we sent this in and then the state wants this. Can you give us an example of why the back and forth with the state?
The only example I can think of is that one of the former business managers actually submitted a request for the final payment on the project that hadn't even been done. So if you do that, if you do that with the state, I don't, I think then they look at you a little more suspiciously maybe or cautiously. But I have full confidence in, in Rita's ability to guide us through this.
Jen, anything?
No. I was just reminding Beverly.
Don't say it, no.
You have something you want to share with the class?
No.
No.
We're, we're not only working with Rita and the person at the state, but we also have an architect that we can lean on with any questions that we. They've done multiple roofs over the years, both with us and other school districts. So they're very familiar with it. And if we have any, um, concerns about how to get this through, if, if it isn't moving as Rita, and I hope that it is, then I would say that we'd get the architect involved and, and talking to the people at the state. But, um, I, I've, I've worked with the people at the state in that office for the last 20 years. They've always been very helpful. And, uh, I don't know exactly what is, I don't know the reasons why this has happened. But we're at this stage and, and again, Rita's communicating with, uh, with the person at the state that can guide us through this. She told us what she, what we need to do. And I think we follow through with that and, and move on and, um, employ the, uh, architect as needed, in my opinion.
So when should we, um, get back to you on the SB roof? I mean, do we put it on the agenda for December or do we put it on the agenda for January? When should we get an update from you?
No, we're, we're talking in December, if not before.
All right.
If I hear something, I'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Any else?
Moving along, Robotics Team Move Update.
Yeah, you're probably all on Facebook. I have a Facebook account. I've never been on it, so. I'm afraid there are a lot of people that are very disappointed. They asked to be my friend and I haven't been their friend.
Don't worry about Facebook. It's a word.
But I, I heard that there was actually a, um, a photo of the trailer of the robotics stuff. Somebody called it a robotics Uber or something. Which was a very large tractor trailer.
A RUBR.
And, uh, and our electricians are, are working on wiring. I saw some of the items, some of the machinery is already plugged in out there. Um, and I know they have to run some electrical on the other side for the computers, but, uh, they're working on that. And there is going to be an open house on Thursday night.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Today's Wednesday already.
We have the negotiations, but I'm hoping that I'll be able to run over there before they're done.
Yeah, it, it, it's, um, there's a lot of stuff in that space now. And, uh, but if the parents and the kids come in, they'll see that there's the equipment there and they'll get a sense of what they're, what they're in for.
Well, and there's a closet that has been partially cleaned out. We've got to finish that up because they're going to store some stuff in this double sided closet with an aluminum balcony door. And then the wood shop also. You sent me a couple of pictures so that, they're working on that too, so that'll be another workspace.
And, uh, we're, we're waiting for the final approval from the town regarding the, uh, storage container, a, a storage container at Fitch High School for their additional items that they won't use right away, that they use back and forth, that they can store stuff until they need it. that they can store stuff until they need it. We put in a site plan request for that. Kind of expected it already. We haven't seen it yet. But they're usually pretty quick on that, so I expect that any day. Once we get approval for that, we can get the container here and get the rest of the... There's still a line of items at Pleasant Valley, which I've gotta email John or call him in the morning and let him know there's still one line of that stuff in the gym over there that still has to come over. But it's going into the storage container. I can't... I don't have anyone to put it in the garage and then into the container. So it's sitting there waiting to get there, so...
What's the cost of the container?
The purchase price? It'd be around $4,500, I think, something in that range.
Are you anticipating it just to be next to your container for the snow removal stuff?
Sorry.
Are you expecting their container to be next to your container?
No.
No.
No. There is a parking lot that's between the two schools. It's actually a middle school's parking lot. And we have a couple of older pieces of equipment that are sitting there and some plows and stuff that we could move elsewhere. So that's what we've requested to use 40 foot of that space in that. And they're reviewing it as soon as they let us know. If they don't allow us to put it there, we're gonna bring it over here in this parking lot somewhere.
Well, and I think that Sherry might have said to me that they had their own truck that they used to transport the robot. And so we were also thinking of putting that truck in that parking lot, too. So, you know, they'd have both of those things together.
It's fairly close.
It's close, yeah.
Few feet away.
How much did it cost us to hire the moving company?
How much did it cost? I think it was $3,200, maybe $3,200, $3,400, something like that. It was under $3,500.
You said $30,000?
No, $3,200.
Okay. Okay, okay, okay.
So so far, you're getting close to $10,000 for this? It's up in the...
I do have to commend, I know I see Sherry there, but they have worked tirelessly organizing, unpacking. I was super impressed when I saw it last time. And I'm going over this week to see it again. And, you know, whether I can make it to the open house, but also on Friday, I'm gonna be at Fitch. So a lot of hard work has gone into this and organization. And you can see the effort when you go in there.
What time is the open house?
The open house is tomorrow. Sherry, is it starting at 5:30 or 6:00?
We're starting our orientation at 6:30.
So the open house is from 6:30 to what time?
So 6:30 to 8 o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
So we're welcome. We've kind of combined our orientation and our open house. We usually do it in two separate meetings, but to kind of save time, we're doing them together. So we give a team presentation, expectations, and, you know, season, you know, how the season will run. And then have them come down to the garage and have a tour of the space. And the sub-team leads will all give a little presentation. Others sub-teams.
Awesome.
And ones that like to come, you are more than welcome.
Thank you.
Jot this thing in here.
So Sam, thank you for leading your team, like, you know, helping the robotics team.
I think the robotics team themselves have done actually more than we have. We've been able to assist them as much as possible, so... We'll continue. There's still plenty to do.
We're pleased, the cleanup effort, the painting, the painting of the floor. We knew when we got the equipment in, it's awfully hard to paint around it. So that was a real plus to get that done.
It's a very important program, so we wanna do everything we can for them to get them up and running.
So after this, so they're ready for open house and orientation, after this, what else is done? It's just sort of punch list work, if you will, or we're done?
Well, I would think I would just go to the box, other than that. Setting up and running the program, I believe. But I don't know if anything else would come in between that.
No, but I think those alternative, those extra spaces that they're gonna need, you know, making sure that those are ready. So I'll check those out, too, on Friday when I'm there.
Yeah, like the business center or the marketing center, yeah.
I've got a couple of other departments that still need to move stuff out of some of those other storage areas. So they're... I can't remember what dates they are, but they have it planned.
I know I'm going, but we need to think about, like, hosting, like, talking to the town to sell some of our stuff. The storage stuff, so that Sam and his team doesn't just, like, move stuff from one building to another building. You know what I mean?
Some of the stuff.
Maybe we could get funds for some of those stuff.
Yeah, Coach Jenkins said that he's done a lot of culling as they're moving out of there. He's done a lot of culling.
Getting rid of obsolete things.
I think the dumpsters had to be emptied a few times for him, so...
Okay, good, thank you.
Jay, any comments, questions?
No, I'm just happy that robotics can get their training started tomorrow. Thank you.
Hallelujah.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Sam. Oh, Sherry, anything you want to add? If not?
No, I think that's all. I just wanna thank you all for your support and advocating to find us a space and get us going. I just wanna let you all know that you're always welcome anytime you wanna come check out the space once we're set up and going. Come in and see what the students are doing. They always love to showcase what they do. They're very passionate about it. So anyone's ever interested in coming in for a tour, just reach out and we can set it tight for that.
Thank you, Sherry.
Thank you, Sherry, for your dedication. Thank Chris for us, too.
All right, maintenance matters, and it does. But what are you referring to?
I don't know what came up with it. Very clever. I think it was my boss.
Sounds like something at the cable access channel. Time for maintenance matters.
We do have fewer maintenance folks than you used to.
Roughly half the staff that we had when I got here, so...
How did we do from last year? The little spreadsheet we had last year? I don't have it with me today. I just thought about it, actually.
You had shared a spreadsheet?
Yeah, with everything you needed to do.
By school.
Yeah, by school.
Geez, you got a copy of that? I'd like to see it.
Your admin put it together because he had made the comment that she had put it together to keep track of stuff.
That was Laura Thorne.
I don't know that.
Yeah, so I guess the only thing that I need to alert you about with regard to maintenance matters at this time is that we had two of our vehicles go in for routine maintenance at the town garage, and they did not come back out.
So we have a black hole in there?
They were deemed not roadworthy. The salt that we put on our roads is, you know, pretty close to when these vehicles were 16 years, roughly 15, 16 years old. Well-maintained over the years because they go to the garage on a regular basis. However, the vans, these are two vans. While they're not out there plowing, like, the plow trucks definitely get washed off after a big storm. And they've been out there plowing and everything. The vans probably don't... Oh, they're driving along a day of the storm or a day after, and there's still plenty of salt on the road. So we've instituted a new program to make sure that our vans are going to be washed out. The undercarriage is washed on a more regular basis going forward. I do have one truck that's going in on Monday to get undercoated, which will help prevent this sort of stuff on a new vehicle. And the dump truck that we have out back, which is relatively, it's only a couple of years old and in really excellent shape. So that will be, when I go on Monday with this vehicle, we'll give an estimate on that one. It's in the hundreds. It's not $1,000. It's in the hundreds of dollars to do this, to do the undercoating on it. But again, we're getting power washed underneath, so it's ready to make sure there's nothing there before they put the coating on it. So that's the other item that we're working on right now.
So I'm sorry, Dean.
No, don't apologize for being chatty. Just go ahead.
So we're down two vans and then one truck from last year. Is that a good simulation?
Yeah, we're muddling through it right now. Take somebody's with their tools and drop them off and pick them up later. And we'll do what we do. We'll do what we have to do.
You know, like, I think we asked for this, or you might have it already, is like the average age of the vehicle. Or if not the age of the vehicle, sometimes the mileage of our vehicles. So Rita can probably help you so that we can put on a cycle that every time a vehicle hits whatever, 175,000 miles, we consider replacing it. You know what I mean? So put it... No, I'm just throwing a number. You know what I mean? So that, and I have a feeling, like, all of our vehicles will be like...
Even though there are only, I mean, there is still a lot. Mileage gets up there, but it's certainly not like my car.
Yeah, no, no, no. I wanna make sure.
So mileage is one consideration. And of course, the other is age. And when I got here, we were on about a 20-year cycle on replacing the vehicles in that range.
That'd be good to have, with Jen's asking, even for budget time, so we can see. I think we did ask for that up on time.
Yeah, the town council used to, I hope still has. There's a vehicle replacement fund. And I remember seeing a sheet from the town manager that had the town's vehicles. And sort of, you know, we expect the squad car, the broom bear, et cetera. And so you have an idea of when you're gonna be, you know, buying things. Doesn't mean that once you get to the point, it's time to go. I mean, if the broom bear's still in shape, then you keep the broom bear. That's, that was a quarter million dollars alone. And I, I don't know, I think I just assumed that the Board of Ed's vehicles were also on that. But it sounds like they're not.
No, they're not.
Okay, so our equipment... Yeah, I mean, that would be a nice thing to have, too, I suppose. So we don't have a capital fund, that's the thing. Separate capital fund. Okay.
Can you get that to us at the next, for the next facilities meeting? Vehicle replacement list?
You wanna listen to the vehicles, their ages?
And the mileage, yeah. I think we're gonna try to make a case very, like, you know, so that if we invest or if we ask for a truck, they can sort of see that we don't just have 10,000 miles on like 10 trucks. It's like more like 200,000 miles on 10 trucks, so...
Yeah, well, it gives us an idea. We're looking at, you know, within the next couple of years.
Yeah, so we can plan ahead.
So we could plan.
Looking at.
Yeah, the age is easy enough. My list right down there, it'll say so-and-so's name drives van such-and-such, 2005 Ford van or something. So the age is not a problem. I'll just have to check on the mileage.
But the odometer, of course, you gotta go through each vehicle and see what it is today, something like that.
The drivers can call in.
Yeah, they could call it in.
I'm sorry, Susan, go ahead.
I don't know if you know the answer to this. This might be a John Burke question. But how do they in the town side? Because they've got so many more vehicles. They have, you know, several police departments, fire departments. They have their own maintenance crew and town crew. So how do they keep replacing their vehicles? How does that work? Do they... There's no CIP for it, right? So do they just budget for it?
There's a vehicle replacement fund, and it's supposed to be funded. Sometimes it's not. But it's supposed to be funded on a regular basis, so that there's money in there. So if you have to buy five squad cars, we've already put the money aside. It isn't a budget hit that year.
That sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, that's what the book talked about last year, doing.
One term for ours is sinking fund, right?
Yeah. Now, we're not allowed to have funny money on the side like that, so...
But it could at least help us plan and prepare and we're not caught.
Okay.
I regret that I have to go now. Jay left.
Yes, 7:41, he was out.
Had enough of us.
So are we... So regarding the maintenance managers, right? Like, I know during the summer, you guys were putting up a wall in Katherine Kolonowski, potentially fixing that office room. And I don't know if your team was able to complete that before school started.
Were you able to put the wall up in the music room?
No, that's all she's talking about, yes. We weren't able to do that.
No?
No.
And then there's the office.
The office.
In the office.
But I don't think that was a... I think, I guess it had to be a privacy wall, but it wasn't like a real wall, like what would have gone into the music room, right?
Oh, I thought you were gonna be able to do that, Sam.
I did too until two guys retired. One of them was our carpenter.
Did we replace the carpenter?
Recently, yes.
Does your department understand?
Yes.
And how many people?
My opinion, or what...
Your opinion?
Your opinion.
You're the director.
Well, I had 14 when I got here, so... And we have six and a half now. We have advertised for a locksmith. So that would make me seven and a half if we got the locksmith. But it certainly could use... I don't need 14. I think 10 would be a better number, for sure.
You said there are some positions that are hard to get to replace, like the plumber was one of them?
Yeah, well, we have a, we did get a plumber. We got a plumber. We have plumbers, electricians. The locksmith advertisement's been out there a couple of times, and we haven't found a locksmith yet, so...
So you need a full-time locksmith?
Well...
So you've been using a company, though, right?
No, not at this point. He just retired recently, so... There were some requests to get some things done that we have to look at, probably bringing somebody in to do it in the meantime, but we haven't yet.
But you used to have a full-time locksmith?
Yes, oh, yeah. He did other things, too, but... When we're talking about locksmith in a school system, locksmith in the school system, it isn't just changing rocks or making keys, it's adjusting doors that go out of alignment, working on fire doors, as magnets and things that, you know, hold those doors open, there's all kinds of things, it isn't just making keys like an outside locksmith might do, so it's a little more involved.
So, how many, so you need, so you have six and a half people now, so you need about four more.
Three and a half, four, yeah.
So, where do you advertise, where do you advertise for help?
Through HR.
Through HR, Laurie does it for you?
Laurie does a portion.
Does she go out to the unions and, I mean, are these specialized positions, or just?
When I'm looking for someone, I always call one of the sub-bases to see if there's anybody retiring that had a particular, because somebody's retiring after twenty years, maybe, you know, on the underside, they're still, you know, while they're getting a pension from the Navy, they're still looking to make a little more money for their family, so.
So, where does Laurie look?
She advertises all over the place, so, and they have-
Fairs.
They've had job fairs and stuff, too, so.
How long have you been short of personnel?
Um, probably about, well, since the summer anyways.
Since the summer, okay.
Is it, it's not a budget thing, then, in other words, we, let's say, if you need ten, ten folks?
I'll have to sit down with Susan Laurie and figure that out, exactly where we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I don't know offhand.
It's part of, you know, what I was going to work on to get into this budget if needed.
Okay.
Add that in there if we can, so.
Because if there's a problem actually hiring people, then we can budget for, you know, any number for X, but we still don't fill them, that's a, that's a different problem.
And because you don't have the people, because-
Retirement.
Yeah, retirement's important.
But because you don't have the people, that must mean that the work in the schools aren't getting done, or in a timely fashion, or-
Yeah, in a timely fashion, yeah, as, as quickly as we were able to do it before.
So, to me, that's a problem.
One of the other issues, what I'm trying to resolve, is our maintenance people also fill in for custodians when they're out, absenteeism is a real problem, in my opinion, and so, almost on a regular basis, at least one of our maintenance guys, or, we, we, we have the maintenance guys, plus we have a fill-in custodian in this group, too, so, he, that person goes almost every day to a building, and sometimes we have two, that person along with two of our maintenance guys going to fill in for custodians, you know, between sick days, vacation, personal days, I haven't seen too many days when somebody isn't out anyways.
You know, in Japan, they have the students clean their classrooms.
If they, if they used to do that, yeah, and if they had-
Sounds like a tricky notion.
Yeah, custodian boys they had running around after school, sweeping hallways and stuff.
So, in your budget, do you have, like, a budget for ten people and you just can't hire, or is your budget, like, the six and a half, seven, and you would need to put in for plus three?
I'll have to sit down with Laurie and see where we are.
Okay, yeah, because I know-
At least one of them was not replaced, so it's not in the budget.
Yeah, I know, like, the very first budget cycle, like, that, that's where I think you lost four or five, if I remember your department correctly.
Our best provider provided us a lot of extra custodial.
Yeah.
Because of the cleanliness and all that we were going through.
Yeah.
And we do get used to that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Anything else, can you get us, can you find that sheet from last year, can you ask Laurie, and she has it, so we can see what we're doing, how we did last year?
Do you remember what you called it, what I called it?
Yeah, it was a maintenance and repair, and then there was a safety one. I'll have Joyce and Lauren, I think they worked on it together or something.
Yeah.
Okay.
We had leaky windows, we had when you fire up the furnaces, that kind of thing.
Smell came in.
Smells, all this nonsense, yeah, not nonsense, but, yeah.
A lot, a lot, they probably just got water, so, yeah.
All right, and now on to mine.
And on to yours.
The MOU, what a lovely document, I wonder who wrote it? So, I'll, I'll start this, I was saying that, yeah, this has been hanging out there, and I've seen, I had to go sort of hunt through the emails to see what everyone has said and commented, because a lot of the emails were like, "Yeah, I'm in agreement," okay, crap, in agreement with what? You know, it's like somebody else said, because stuff is nested together, so, that's been my excuse, not a very excuse, more of a rationale, for not actually finishing this, but-
And we had John Burke and Floyd both weigh in, right?
Right, so, do, for those of you who are paying closer attention, do you think I have all the comments needed now to actually finish the draft, and if anybody has any additional comments, concerns, this could be the first time you're seeing this, and if so, you know, that's, don't be embarrassed, don't be shy.
No, I'm ready.
Let me know, okay.
It's okay to me.
Yeah, I mean, our concerns, our basic concern is the school district was, we didn't want the town hogging the field just in case we needed it for something, as long as we're not using it, they can use it.
Yeah, I think that's in there.
They're going to upkeep it, pay for all the-
Right.
Do all the upkeep and repairs.
Did I say that?
Yeah.
And we're on the insurance, our insurance and their insurance, we're all set with that.
Yep.
Yes, insurance, termination system.
Why do we capitalize the field?
Where?
On page two, it says, "The use of the field."
Oh, because I defined it under purpose, I said, "The, the open field of the rear of Mary Morrison Elementary School property located on 1442 Gett Road, Groton, Connecticut", in parentheses, "The Field."
So, we didn't have to write all that?
That's, that's, I do that with everything.
Okay.
I define the term, and then I just keep using that, that term. The other thing that I do sometimes, and people find, people find it annoying and archaic, is I'll say, "The said field," I can do that if you want.
That field works.
I do not do part of the first part and part of the second part, I've actually only seen that in New York, but all right, so, yeah, it says feedback, so if nobody has anything they want to say, then I'll just go through that, the email chains, and gather my, so this is going to go, so let's say that I redraft, right, I revise, I redraft, I send it to John, or Floyd, or we're done.
They've seen it, right?
Yeah, they've seen it.
So, then, should we put it on the committee of the whole?
Are you thinking, are you thinking you need to make changes to this?
I don't know, I thought that, I thought that there were changes suggested, if there were no changes, wow, that would be a first, I mean, I-
I don't see anything.
Okay.
And Floyd didn't suggest anything that I know.
Yeah, I thought I saw things that said, like, "Yeah, that's a good idea," I'm like, "Okay, where's the idea?" You know, so, okay.
The only thing Floyd did suggest was, who's going to, who's going to cut the grass?
I think that's in there.
I think it's in there already.
There was going to be a deduction, I think, right?
A deduction?
On the, on the charge.
Oh, okay. I only said-
Why the deduction?
No, no, I think the town was going to reduce-
Oh, our allocation that we get from them?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Because it's less space, okay.
So, you're going to-
Or give us credit for-
You guys are going to cut the grass?
No, we're, um-
Who's cutting the grass?
Our outside provider cuts the grass.
Oh, okay.
Wait, 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 wait.
Who's cutting it now? The outside provider?
Yeah, but when they take it over, they're going to essentially reduce, they're going to essentially pay us for that.
Is it in this contract, in this MOU?
It was, it was in there somewhere, I don't have that piece of paper you have, that's not an attachment to tonight's meeting, is it?
No.
I didn't write this.
She didn't write?
No, I wrote this, I got to have my head examined, it doesn't read like something I would have written.
Which one?
Hey, hi, I just-
This could have been, I did print, no, this, this could have been, yeah, and it's not lettered correctly, this could have been an addition, it could be that the comments that were made were incorporated.
Where are you, Dean?
I'm, like, on the second page under C, the party, parties agree, party, parties agrees to respect the field, I, I could have made an error there, parties agrees to respect the field, to include but not limited to keeping the field clean and orderly.
And that would mean mowing.
Just doesn't seem, I'm not sure that I would have worded it that way, and it's also grammatically incorrect.
Yeah, I think that's-
Yeah, again, which is possible, I've done that, I'd have to review my own stuff, but nevertheless, we're not going to belabor that here, whether it's mine or it's somebody else's, I take it-
Well, John, John Burke did take some of the suggestions and said he would go on and put them in, so some of those recommendations have been added.
Yeah, because the formatting's not mine either, it's changed, I think what's happened was-
Was this your original?
And I don't recall, frankly, I don't recall whether I gave him a Word or a PDF, if it was a PDF, he could have, anybody could have taken the language out and recreated it, it's not hard to do, but in any event, okay, so, I certainly know where the original is, so, I'll have an idea of, it looks like there's a couple of things in here that I definitely would change, or Andrea will get on me.
Yeah. Your last hurrah.
That party's agreed.
Yeah, I know, I can't believe that I would have said something like that, but I'm not perfect, anyway, so if there are no comments from here, and any comments that I find online are already incorporated, and I guess, other than just some mistakes or a feeling that we need to expand on the term "respect," and it just seems like a very, kind of a, you know, something you would say over a beer, you know, respect, we don't know who we're talking about, right, that's like, we don't do that, we have to define that, what do we mean by "respect," respect the field means what, is it like, obey your thirst, you know, what are we talking about?
So, what are you going to, you're going to clean up the-
I'm going to clean it up, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to clean it up.
Then send it to John Burke?
Send it to John.
Okay.
If Floyd doesn't want to see it again, I'm not going to bother him, and I'll have him charge us.
Okay, so when do you think all that's going to happen, and, because I'll have to put it on a, some agenda, because MOUs get approved by the board, I take it?
End of the week, well, it's going to be approved by the board, I guess by the town, by the council, too, right? It's an agreement between us and the town, even when we are the town, but, okay.
So, do we put it on a COW meeting and then our meeting at the end of the month, so that it can go to town council in December?
Yeah, I mean-
No, or is that too aggressive?
Well, we have a lot of the COW meetings, so, I don't know.
Well, let's put it this way, things don't have to go through the COW, I mean, this is not like policy or something like that, or, you know, with a defined procedure, this could, you know-
Go through a regular meeting.
Just straight to our meeting?
We could theoretically do all of our business in the regular meeting and never have a COW if we don't want to meet, there's no law that says we got to meet in the COW, so if we wanted to expedite, if we thought there wasn't going to be a hell of a lot of discussion, it wasn't going to bog down a regular meeting, then by all means, put it on a regular meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
People circulate, circulate the draft ahead of time, so people won't walk in and say, "Oh, you get it," they will have had it, they have any comments, it's not a very, very long document, it's not highly technical, like the, like the solar panel stuff.
These things.
Exactly, it's in plain English, field is capitalized, yeah.
Plus, we've talked about this multiple times already, so it's just a matter of them, yes or no.
The discussion, if there's any discussion at all, it'll be on the basic premises, which is, and the basic concerns, which is, you know, "Well, what happens if the town takes over the field, and-"
But it's all in here.
Maybe we shouldn't, yeah.
Don't list it.
Yeah.
And if we want it back, it's in here.
Yeah.
So, this is really straightforward, so just clean it up, and we'll put it on the regular board meeting at the end of the month, clean it up, we'll send it to John, we'll send it to, we'd probably have to send it to Floyd again.
No.
And we just send it to board members, asking, "Please, if you have any suggestions, let us know before the meeting."
Right.
You don't want to get bogged down with this, so.
As you wish, Madam Chair. Um, what's that? I said, "As you wish, Madam Chair."
Yeah, so let's get it, try to get it approved before you leave our, our-
Yeah, that's what I'm going to put at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
At the end of the, of course.
When you put it that way.
I know.
Well, you did all the work, can you remember?
Well, just, just think of who's going to replace me.
Yeah, you're irreplaceable, there you go.
No, my father told me a long time ago, he says, "You're not irreplaceable, don't act like you are."
You're just a cog.
You're unforgettable, unforgettable, that's who you are.
They're all cogs.
That was, that was a great album, how they, and I've never seen it repeated, has that ever been repeated, where they basically, I mean, she sang with her deceased father, my goodness.
Yeah, no, that's really good.
Exactly, anyway, so I'll undertake a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Lock done in two hours.
Done.
Yes.